There's 7:01, so we will call this meeting to order. Westmoreland City Council, March the 15th, 2018. Pastor Jay, I think you're doing our devotion tonight. If you could come up.
Okay. They may have already started. They appreciate your kind. About popped through the main event.
I don't know who invited me. I answered someone's text. So I'm just gonna share scripture and then have a prayer for council tonight. I'm gonna share scripture from Proverbs, Chapter 14, verse 34. The Bible tells us that godliness or righteousness makes a nation great, but sin is against grace to any people. And, you know, it's God's will that we have people that govern, who are good people, honest people, you know, godly people, people who believe and seek the will of God and the wisdom of God. And that's what I pray. I pray for every morning, part of my prayer time, is I pray for our nation. I pray for all those in authority, from our president, vice president, congress, the senate. And I pray for our state government, you know, the governor, all the cabinet and all the legislators. And I go down to county government, pray for them. And then I pray for our city council each day. And that they'll have wisdom, godly wisdom, and that they'll do what's right for our community, that those in authority do what's right for our nation. Because the Bible tells us that righteousness, or that is godliness, makes a nation great. You know, we've heard a lot of slogans about what makes a nation great, but godliness is really people who believe, who will believe and trust God, and people in government, people who are serving, that will ask for God's wisdom and guidance. In the Bible, it talks of the kings of Israel. And there was two types of kings. There were those that did what's right in the sight of God, and there were those who did not what's right in the sight of God. And I just want to share a couple of those real quick here tonight. The first king was a good king. His name was Josiah. And it says that he was only eight years old when he began to reign. And he became king, and he reigned in Jerusalem 31 years. He did what was pleasing in the Lord's sight and followed the example of his ancestor David. And we all know about King David. He wrote the Psalms and ruled Israel. He did not turn away from doing what was right. During the eighth year of his reign, while he was still young, Josiah began to seek the God of his ancestor David. Again, this is, you know, he did what was right. He started seeking God's wisdom. And then in the 12th year, he began to purify Judah and Jerusalem, destroying all the pagan shrines, the astro poles, and the carved idols and cast images. He ordered that the altars of Baal be demolished, that the incense altars which stood above them be broken down. He also made sure that the astro poles, carved idols, and cast images were smashed and scattered over the graves of those who had sacrificed to them. And so on and so forth. But he cleansed Israel. He brought Israel back to God. They got away from God and were starting to serve pagan idols and started to stray away from God. But Josiah did what was pleasing in God's eyes, and he brought Israel back to a place of God, and he got rid of the pagan things, the pagan idols and idolatry that was in the land. And again, that's the difference of someone who seeks God, who's seeking God's wisdom and pleasing to God. On the other hand, there was another king named Ahaz. And Ahaz was 20 years old when he began, became king, and he reigned in Jerusalem 16 years. He did not do what was pleasing in the sight of the Lord, as his ancestor David had done, instead he followed the example of the kings of Israel. He cast metal images of the worship of Baal. He offered sacrifices to the valley Hinnim, even sacrificing his own sons in the fire. In this way, he followed the detestable practices of the pagan nations the Lord had driven from the land ahead of the Israelites. He offered sacrifices, burned incense at the pagan shrines and on the hills. This king did not seek God. He wanted, really, he wanted the favor of the neighboring nations. He wanted to be popular, you know, with the current culture. And the current culture said, you know, we want to blend in all these other, we want a blended nation. You know, we want to blend in all the nations around them. We want to serve their gods as well as our gods. And we see what happened there to Ahaz, that the, it goes on to talk about how that a neighboring kingdom overtook them, and they became captive to that neighboring kingdom because they got away from God and didn't seek His wisdom. So the reason I brought this out is that when we seek the wisdom of God, we're seeking to do what's right in God's eyes and be blessed, as Josiah was blessed as he ruled his nation. Then, on the other hand, if we have people in government who are like Ahaz and are seeking themselves, or seeking to be popular with other people, then, you know, we find that, you know, they become captive. And we know Israel later on became captive altogether. They lost their halens, they lost their identity, you know, when they were taken off into Babylon, and so on and so forth. And, you know, we find that today, you know, I believe in our nation. You know, we have people that want to do what's right, seek the Lord, and we have those that don't want to do what's right, to seek themselves. And we've seen in the media lately, you know, a lot of people in political places have fallen because they were seeking their own, their own, what they wanted to do, what they thought was right, instead of doing and serving the people that they were called to serve. And so I just want to share those this afternoon, and I'd like to go and pray a prayer tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, for your love and grace. We thank you, Father, for this day you blessed us with. I thank you, Lord, for this council. And I thank you for these people, these citizens here at Westmoreland that are here today. And I just pray, God, that you just bless this council, Lord God, with wisdom, that they will seek you, Lord. And every decision they make, they would just ask, oh, God, for your wisdom and guidance. And, Lord, that they'll make the right decisions that are beneficial to the people of this city, and, Lord, that will be pleasing in your sight. And, Lord, we thank you, God, for your protection upon this city. Lord, keep us, oh, God, from harm, of any kind of threats of weather. Lord, I thank you, God, for just being with us, Lord God, and prospering this city of Westmoreland, and also blessing this council tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen. I bless you all.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd call parole, please.
Smalling?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Finer?
Here.
For record, reflect, everyone that's present, we have a forum, and we'll continue now with meeting. Next item is to adopt the agenda.
Make motion, we adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
I move to, can I add anything now?
Yeah, we have motion and second.
Yeah, I like to, we've went through the safety manual several times. I like to move, we had approved in the safety manual to the agenda tonight.
No, I'm gonna cut this right down. I want to talk about it a little bit more in a meeting. So, and this is not the setting for it tonight.
So my motion, you can't accept my motion yet?
No, I said I want to discuss it some more.
Okay. I did what you asked me to do. I got with the supervisors, and I didn't know that.
I supposed to end off. I want to get with them personally, myself, and having you talk to them. There were still a couple other questions, so we'll get that done, and we'll talk about it more soon, you know, next month's agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Motion and a second. End of discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Is it aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do a roll call vote, Kevin, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Finer?
No.
Smalling?
Yes.
Motion carries forward one. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Kathleen Alman, you're the first.
As y'all probably know by now, if there's a cause that will help propel Westmoreland forward, then I'm here. And I generally will have something to say. My request of council tonight is that you vote the liquor tax funds to purchase playground equipment for the Doc Carter Park. The city is not a city without a playground for the children. We have new folks moving in. And just recently, whether it was today or yesterday, there was a Facebook post about somebody new wanting to know if there was a playground that they can take their kids to. So tonight, it's up to this council to decide if there's going to be a playground or not. You have a group of citizens that have come together, put a plan together, have worked hard together, and are willing to see this move forward. But they need the help of the council to get it going financially. And I think it's a good place to put the tax for the children. So I'm asking if you would do the right thing and vote playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Hicks.
I'd like to talk to this.
You should pick up.
Okay. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. See, said, my name's John Hicks, and I'm up here to talk about the playground and hopefully the revenue. As I was sitting in the back this evening and looking at everyone in here, I thought, you know what? I doubt there's a soul in here that couldn't argue over liquor stores or property taxes, or even the weather if we were standing outside in the rain. But the one thing that I think that no one in this room could argue about is that some point in time in their life, they were a child. No matter how old or young, they were a child. Now, why is that important? Here's why is that important. Because what children need in this day and age is to feel safe. They need to feel loved. They need to feel cared about. And they need a place to let their imagination go wild. Me and my wife have five kids and moved to Westmoreland almost two years ago. We moved to this town because of the people, because of the schools. We would eat at Kathy's, just looking around at houses, and go, this is the community we want our children to grow up in. I got involved doing the Cub Scouts. I'm the Cub master at Crossroads Church. Come check us out sometime. There's about 30 boys up there. Each and every one of these children, whether it's the Cub Scouts or my very own, want everything. And I believe this city council and this city believes in that too. And here's why. They deem the old playground equipment unsafe. That tells me they care about the safety of these children right there. That's a big step. The love and compassion from everyone that you see on Facebook, that you hear small-town talk about, about the children. Mayor Jerry's told me before, you never know what this children or child that you are talking to will grow up and become. They could be sitting in one of your seats one day. So I'm asking on behalf of myself, on behalf of my family, to please use this opportunity better. Show these children that they have a chance in this community, that this community loves them, they care for them, and let them let their imagination go wild. You don't think a child has imagination? Build pine wood derby cars with them. It's not a block of wood, it is so much more. So I ask tonight that you please vote to use this money for the playground. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jovi Matena.
I don't know if I can follow that. I almost just want to say ditto. I'm not only here on behalf of the Midtown Park Committee, but also as a mom. I kind of have the same story as John. We moved here about, almost five years ago, from Salt Lake City, Utah. And we came to Westmoreland, it was the very last property we looked at, and we said, this is where we want to spend the rest of our lives. We have a 10-year-old son, and he would be here tonight too, but he's not feeling well. So he's at home, and we're speaking for him. Our kids need a safe place to be, and we can provide that. And as the committee, we're, we are devoted to fundraising and collecting money, using our own money and applying for grants and all sorts of things. But we can't rely solely on that. To really get our feet off the ground, we need to get some equipment now, so that the people we try to get grants from know we're serious. We're sticking to the long haul. So this money would help do all of that. And what better way for the people who didn't want a liquor store to say, well, at least it helps something in the community? It will also help businesses, because people can bring their kids to play while they shop, go eat at Kathy's or at Wendy's City Grills. So it's a win-win altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Hargit.
I just wanted to ask if you could say yes to the, for the park, because it wouldn't really affect me, but I have a niece on the way, and I want her to grow up the same experience I have with the park.
Appreciate everyone coming tonight and speaking on behalf of, whether it's for or against. And it looks like it's overwhelmingly for at this point. So that concludes our public comments. And the next item on the agenda is the minutes from the February 15th, 2018 meeting.
I make a motion up for the February City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a proper second to approve the minutes as read. Any discussion?
Yes. Under the paragraph on the public hearing, the mayor put that over the public hearing. Public hearing never was closed according to the minutes. There was still in session at the public hearing, I suppose. It needs, I think it needs to state that the public hearing was closed.
I'll amend my motion to add that to it.
I'll just withdraw my second list and start over. Is that what you want to do?
Or you can make a motion and add the corrections.
That we pass it with?
With that change.
Yeah.
Okay, with the amendment of adding that public hearing was closed.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go back to the table.
Oh. I think me and Tommy both. So we're, we're still the way. I'll add it.
The change to close the, what we carry, and if we need to, we can go back to the date and get the time over then, if that's necessary. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I apologize, I skipped one of the names on the public comment, so we'll go back and pick that up this time. Patricia?
Thank you.
I mean, like, everybody kind of said. Everybody kind of said what, you know, everybody feels, I think, the same. So, I mean, like, all I really have to say at this point is just please, please just see it fit to give these to these kids, they deserve it.
Thank you, and I apologize.
It's okay.
My bifocals getting twisted around my teeth, and I can't see what I'm saying. Okay, the next item is the February financial statement. And Kelly made some additions to the original one that you sent out, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the revised financial statement as printed, presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of Vice Mayor Carter in multiple seconds, so open for discussion.
It's good to see that our state and county sales tax was up this month quite a bit on each category. That helps. Of course, that sales tax for the month of January, I don't know what was going on in January. People spent more money, but...
And the groceries.
It's when they broke.
Any discussion?
I said two or three questions, and Kelly answered my questions, so...
Yeah, I appreciate y'all messaging me with any questions you have. It's a lot easier for me to answer them when I'm not sitting here and trying to come up with answers.
Yeah, I decided to do that, to take all of my things that I saw to the office and let her do the correction beforehand.
Let's hear if you caught the roll.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Finer?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries, you name this. Moving on to the new business, the item book is Mo Taylor, Commissioner Mo Taylor, and Fishing Rodeo.
Well, it's that time of year again, almost. So I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. Really, the only thing, I'm sorry. The only thing that has changed is the date. This year's event will be June the 9th, approved. That is Free Fishing Day in Tennessee, actually Free Fishing Weekend. A member of the TWRA's already reached out to me wanting to help out again this year, so that helps. We had, if I'm not mistaken, 78 kids last year. It was down a little, but it was a whole lot going on. We peaked at 100. So it wasn't, you know, with everything that was going on that day last year, we were proud to have that many. Everybody walked away with something. And most, 50, probably 52 of them walked away with a fishing pole. So had tremendous support, financial support and donations. So we, you know, that's what makes it, kind of, valid, actually. And just always like to thank everybody that's able to contribute, volunteer, and help out. So, any questions?
Appreciate you, all your efforts that you put forth. I know it's a lot of hard work, but the children benefit again.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Another thing I would ask, if we could continue closing the lake at Thursday around 6:00 until after the event's over, because we put the fish in on Thursday, typically on Thursday evenings. We've had a few people try sneak in and get them on Friday, Thursday and Friday nights. But the police department's always been a tremendous help with me on that, so never, never had any really issues, so...
Close it on Thursday, June 7th?
Yeah. Yeah, that's worked good in the past. And I usually put up the signs telling that the lake's closed. I've got some signs that I made, or I made, so they're not anything special, but it gets the message across, so... And once again, I appreciate y'all supporting this.
Well, we actually put it in the budget last year. Council had foresight to bring it up, and we're putting it in there as an annual event.
Well, I appreciate that.
We're putting it in the, not eight, two thousand nineteen budget also.
All right. Thank y'all.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I make the motion, we approve Mo Taylor's Fishing Rodeo for June 9th.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve. Discussion.
Do we need to add in there that we will be closing the lake on the 7th?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Okay, motion carries and ends. Mr. Ted Weaver. Mr. Weaver and I talked this afternoon. Normally, I don't allow anything on the agenda that says various, because that's kind of a wide-open field. I explained to him that we discuss the items at the work study and decide what's going to be voted on, and then we bring it to the council at our regular meeting for the vote. And he wanted to discuss a couple of items. We don't, I don't, and I don't know if we'll be putting anything there for a vote tonight, or if we'll be discussing it more at the work study. But go ahead.
Forrest, I'd like to ask your attorney something. Mr. Bradley?
I'm listening.
Seems to me like I'd heard a law. Would you correct me if I'm right, or correct me about laws? If someone does something against the law, when someone wants to correct it, is there a clause that says the contract would be null and void?
Mr. Weaver, this is a time for you to make your comments. It's not a question-and-answer session. So you just need to tell the council what you want them to hear.
Well, this is what I believe happened. The rental of the building, since it was done illegally, it would become null and void, that contract. This is what I believe. Is that right, or is that wrong?
If it's what you believe, it's what you believe. We don't pass judgment on your beliefs, Mr. ...
I realize that, but you two would either say yes or no, that is against the law. Is that right? Is that not part of your responsibilities?
You need to address your comments to the council, not to me.
I accuse a member of this council of signing a contract and her husband signing a contract, and the contract should be null and void.
Okay. I'm gonna make the suggestion that we table this.
Okay.
And, till you get a legal opinion. We, I'll discuss it with our attorney and see how we need to proceed with it.
If you have an attorney, if you have an attorney, Mr. Weaver, you need to have him contact me, and we can discuss it.
Sir, remember, tomorrow.
What we need to do.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
I told you all last week that I had an attorney.
Well, I haven't heard from anybody, I'm just telling you.
Well, no, it hasn't come to that point yet, but it's soon to.
Okay. What's the next item you want to discuss?
Have you heard enough about the, what we plan to do? I think I should interject one thing that you don't know. I haven't told anybody, except for Jerry on his way home from work. Be easier if I read this. See if I can find it here. We have as our motto, reuse the past, celebrate the future. At the end of our festival season, which goes through next January... At the end of our festival season, which goes through next January, I can proudly say that I can retire. Well, I talked about all the other festivals, so I mean, I didn't say much about these. In November, we'll have the sausage festival, wrapping up with a wonderful month-long light display, celebration of light in lights. We had a winter park. And this was in there, I said, to complete this epistle. We're also planning to change the facade. You know what that is? It's a piece that covers the building. It's attached minimally. We're also planning to change the facade on building on Park Street to match the building of 1886. I don't think I told you that, Ben. I'm not sure. For quite a long time, after much thought, we have the magic plane that will take us over the top. For the past year, or for the next year and a long time afterwards, we will have a series of 11-plus festivals, and a festival to compete this evening. And then, an evening together, a gala to celebrate.
Now, this is for your November festival you're wanting to have?
Which one?
Your November festival?
It's the sausage festival.
Okay.
The last festival is a celebration of light, new lights.
Okay. Something that we're going to make, I guess, as part of our policy. We've discussed this at the work study, some of the things that the council is going to want to start asking for. And I know you can meet all of those, you'll have them all, and like we said, at the work study, just apply, just apply for your permit, and it'll be brought forward, and we'll take it from there, so.
I hear that you're pick roadblocks of our way. Oh, okay. Moving on. I'll have the last last one now.
You've got about three more minutes.
I'd like to know the status of the, the back building, it's empty.
And it's going to probably stay empty. I'm going to put it into budget this year to see if we can have an architect draw up some plans for it to pursue it becoming a community center.
Well, that's what I wanted, except for a key center that is big enough for the community. I have the plans. And we're 501(c)(3) eligible by type, or my computer is broken at the moment. Not, I don't have a keyboard or a mouse, it works.
Okay. Okay, well.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's why I asked.
I mean, you can, you can ask the council if there's something else that they want to do with it, but.
Is there something else you want to do with it?
That's where you bring it to the work study, and so we can discuss it openly.
Well, I brought it up at the work study, no one said, asked any, I asked if there were any questions, and no one answered. Is that correct?
You did ask if there were questions.
Okay, so if there were no questions then, why is there any question now, or at the next meeting?
You need to be a little bit more specific with us, that you want to put like item A, B and C on the attendance to be voted on.
Okay.
And you will be at the next work study, correct?
Oh, I certainly will.
Okay. Okay, that's about the time, so we appreciate it for tonight, and we'll see you at work study. Thank you. The next item is ordinance number 032018-1. Ordinance to amend the permit fee for fireworks from 500 to 800 for the sale of fireworks within corporate city limits of the city of Westmoreland. Now, we do have something within the ordinance that will need to be changed, where it says now therefore be it resolved. That should be changed to ordain, and with that, that will require two readings. So this, this will be the first reading of the ordinance.
Make a motion to pass this ordinance 032018-1 with the changes that Mayor Councilman mentioned.
My second amendment. We have a motion, but Councilman Louie, and his second by Councilman Bennell to approve this ordinance with the changes. Other discussion?
I know it was brought before, I'm just waiting for it. I know it was brought before us, where Galton charges, I think it was 1,500 X amount of dollars in Portland, 1,200 or vice versa, and I just don't want to scare away any business that we could have in Westmoreland. If we did go up on the rates, we have to consider that Galton and Portland have a larger population, that these vendors can regroup their, their fee by the sale of their fireworks, so. That was my concern. I'm sure $300 is not a lot to them, but.
Well, and my question on this would be, I mean, how many on average seasonal retailers do we have selling fireworks? Because let's say we just have two or three, I mean, as Frida said, you know, an extra 600 or 900, yes, you know, that's significant for us, but is, you know, what level would it be discouraging to the actual, the actual vendor, so?
I really don't think that the council are going to.
No, I'm in, you're good.
I really don't think that the $300 would be discouraging, because there is a tremendous markup in these fireworks. And, well, we have two major stands, I think, or three.
Three, I think.
Two.
I think, I think there's two major ones.
Two majors.
One on the corner and one at the bank.
Choice one is at the citizens' bank.
I think this is a reasonable bound here.
Well, and with two readings, it's one of those things too, you know, we, we have two passes of this, if anything additional comes up.
Mr. Bradley, you have anything additional to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's the council's will, something like this, you said whatever you wanted to say.
Any other discussion? Kelly, if you'll call the vote.
Bennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Rickert, the taxes 421.
And I need to advertise for the second reading, correct?
Yes. Why would you need to advertise? I, I don't know anything in the charter that requires that.
Okay.
It's just an ordinance. You need to cite plenty where you can.
Okay. We're very used to doing it on the rezoning issue.
Yeah, well, in the rezoning, you have to do the public notice.
Next item is the spring cleanup day. I think we had determined that April the 28th would be the best day for that.
I have a motion for April the 28th to be the spring cleanup day.
Second.
We have a motion in a proper second to accept the April 28th as the spring cleanup day, 8 o'clock until, until 12.
I think that's what they do, and this will authorize when you get done with the schedule.
They still have room at 12, that's usually a surprise. They go a quick.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the job descriptions for wastewater treatment plant, the plant operator and also the supervisor.
Do we need to do them separately, or is this, go ahead and?
That's up to the council, depending on what you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the work study for more discussion. There are some things in there that may need to be added, but I'm not prepared to talk about it at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to defer. Motion dies by lack of second.
I make a motion to accept the job descriptions for our wastewater plant operator and our wastewater treatment plant supervisor position as written.
My second amendment. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Carter and second by Councilman Bennell to accept them the way that they are written. Discussion.
The, the only comment I'll make to what Brian's concerned is, you know, we've been working on these job descriptions for a while, and I think it's important to just have a baseline, and what we have in place is a good solid baseline. Now, here, you know, down the road, if there are things that need to be changed, then, you know, it's something we can always add down the road, but I think it's important that we just go ahead and get this baseline established, so we have a, so we can move on to the other ones as well, and make sure we have decent place.
Okay, I do not have a copy of the last ones, but they were updated. Did we get GED accepted on the open notes? Because it, and right now, the one I have just said is graduation from a standard high school.
I don't see GED on my copy. I've just got graduation from high school.
Yeah, I think the only change I requested was the helping out with safety regulations. I think that was the only change we had at the work study, so there was something else that needed to be changed.
And secure wastewater operations within two years. And then there were no changes on the operator.
Mr. Bradley, the GED, are probably acceptable, there's a.
Choice of the council.
Choice of the council, okay.
If it's not on there, I think it needs to be on there.
Is that a change we can amend the motion with, or is it something that we need to wait?
To make a motion to amend, add high school diploma or GED, that's simple.
That's.
I'll make that motion.
Free.
Okay. Have a motion to amend.
I'll run the first.
You have a second for that?
Yes.
Motion and second order amendment to add high school or GED, and did we change it to a class three, or you want to leave it as class four?
This date's going to dictate which one we have to have at some point, so.
I just had class four marked out, completely correct.
Class three is what's required now.
So it just said secure wastewater operations and wastewater collections class, that is how it was ordered.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment for the change to add to GED and class three, and is already in for two years, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The amendment passes unanimously. Now we're back to the regular motion to accept the job descriptions. And we have a motion and a second on that, any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the liquor tax codes that we use for purchase of playground equipment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion here to defer this back to work studies for further discussion. I'm not against it, I'm all for it, but I think we have to have a little more discussion on it.
My second amendment.
We have a motion in a second to table this to the work study. All in favor, well, call for all of it, Ms. Kelly.
Carter?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Bennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries it to the third, to the work study, three to ten.
I would suggest if everybody's in favor of this, that you go ahead and prepare an appropriation ordinance to appropriate it, rather than just discuss it. That way, you can go ahead and have a first reading.
Next item on the agenda is security lights at the Dream Center. The chief is a little hoarse tonight, so I'll try to paraphrase what he said. Our judge said that even with the addition of the two lights that we had, it's still very dark over there.
Yes.
She is concerned very much about the safety of the citizens and the liability. So we need to, to vote to add at least one, if not two more over there. And they may even have to do additional polls with that, but it, it needs to be safe for people coming in in our court.
I totally agree. Actually, there's a light out on the side of the building, and there's a light where you walk in that glass door, it's out. I reported that to be fixed, but it's, what I reported to the county, it's out of my hands, I just asked them. But it's still kind of dark down there.
Can we decide on that, with it being not our, not our property, with it being the school board's property?
But we're using it.
For our use, okay.
So.
I think it would be appropriate to call the director of schools. Director of schools will make sure there's no objection to it, and they might be willing to do it for you, guess? We already got some lights open there. I think the ones that are there potentially are wrong, please.
No, they, they were being.
That corner, and you turn that light around, or that other pole.
Okay.
It's still very dark, and she's concerned.
I wonder if we could get a brighter light, like, I've got the灯灯 in here, I mean, it's, even one little LEDs, I'm still not sure it's going to be.
I don't know if those are 100 watt or 400 watt, if they're doing 400 watt, but even, even if they have.
So we need to defer this to the town, to the county, to the school board.
Seems like we want questions about what kind of lights and stuff, so that's what I was talking about.
We need to get it done, the kitchen of the county, if the county agrees, that we need to proceed, I think, from safety standpoint.
Where the vehicles park you, it's dark, it's a dungeon.
Yes.
Can we make the motion then to do this upon school board approval?
That'd be fine. Continue, so we get the approval of the director of schools, let them find it.
I will make a motion to add security light, lighting at Dream Center. Appropriate for safety, I guess that's what, enough, enough light in there to, to, to have, get rid of all the safety concerns. And that be done upon the approval or acceptance of the Sundar Can School Board.
I second that motion. I'll say of that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to add security lighting to satisfy safety concerns at the courtroom area with the approval of the Sumter County School Board and the acceptance of it.
So, just to clarify, the chief and you discussing this, y'all have specific places in mind, right? Like, there's, you have specific areas and a number of lights and...
Yes, ma'am. There's the...
Like a plan, I guess.
The front of the school, front of the parking lot, is lit up, but when you get towards the ends of the parking lot, it's really dark.
That corner back around the cafeteria.
And there's some people, the overflow parking lot towards the back, on the side, more towards the, where that double light sits, it's real dark over there. And there's a light out back there. I've reported that two or three times, and it's still haven't been fixed.
Okay. I just wanted to get an idea of what you were wanting.
Is that a tricandle light? No, it's just school light. It's on the building.
And so, will you contact the...
I'll call the school.
Okay. So I don't need to get...
The director of schools, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay. Let's call for all of this, Kelly.
Lee?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item on the agenda is the mayor's knowledge for the last quarter. I move we approve the knowledge for December, January, and February for the mayor. We have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's knowledge from previous quarter. Any discussion? Call for all of this, Kelly.
Benel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Do you want to remind us about the budget meeting we're having on the 27th?
Have a couple of announcements to make. You will notice that in the future, when you start coming in, the Post is making a lot of changes, and one of the things that they are asking us to do is to start enforcing one of the TCA codes. We're going to work into this slow, and we're going to kind of see how things go with it. It's mildly standing, and I haven't read the code yet and checked into it. They're actually wanting us to purchase a metal detector for you to come in for screening, just like you would going into the airport or into the courthouse. Right now, what we're going to do is just kind of warn people. We don't want to intrude on anybody's privacy or anything like that, but we have been told, and you'll notice the signs on the doors, a little brighter yellow to get your attention. We've been told that we're going to start being inspected on that. So, we're trying to just be proactive in that this time, so don't take any offense to it if you come into a meeting, and we certainly don't want it to deter anyone from not coming to a meeting. The other announcement is on March the 26th, I think, 27th, there will be a special called meeting of the city council to discuss the budget for the upcoming year. And that will start, we'll start it at 6:00. Okay, it will be at 6:00, and we will be advertising that, but we want to get the word out tonight. And that's the only thing that will be discussed at the meeting that night is to start preparing for the 2018-19 budget. And that budget has to be in effect by July 1 of 2018 for the next 12-month period.
That'll be a work study session, kind of session.
A meeting, work study. Right now, that's all the same. We won't be running anything to vote on, so...
March the 20th is the next Parks Committee meeting, at 5:00 at Megan Bank. We've got two more playground companies coming to discuss with us, basically to make sure maybe the decision that kind of tentatively made is the right one, so we won't have this talk to you tomorrow. That's it. We'll cover it for us. If you all want to come and ask a question, we'll be in by...
Is it...
It's at 5:00.
Out.
One of them's coming at 5:00, and we'll get to Megan Bank.
We will have to get, if the city furnishes any money, we will have to get bids.
Well, it depends on how much the man is, but yeah, this is...
Yeah, that's a circuit part. We've had that discussion.
It has to be competitively bid.
Salute.
Very good.
He just messaged me back over.
I tried it.